Yeah, right now.
Yep, got you. You ready? Everybody ready? Everybody ready? Turn on my microphone here. Make sure we're good. Back there is good. Good evening. It's 7:00 PM on Monday, October 19th, 2020. This is the regular city council meeting for T K, South Carolina. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mabesede. Chris, you got everybody?
Well, we're good for the forums.
We're good. So we'll go ahead and start with item number one, is a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing to consider an amendment to ordinance 77 in the zoning code, Article 10, Section 19-153, Sub 3, for mixed-use districts. And a little introduction to this, over the last nine months or so, a mixed-use working group has been working, and it consisted of some Planning Commission members, council members, Economic Development Commission members, city staff, to retool our mixed-use districts in line with our 2020 comprehensive plan updates. And so specifically, it brings into the mixed-use district requirements some of the elements of the comprehensive plan, removes some permitted uses that were not in alignment with the plan, add some permitted uses that were desired, highly desired. And this set of regulations is intended to become, in the future, our regional center mixed-use district regulations. In the comprehensive plan, there are two other mixed-use districts anticipated, and those districts will get regulations similar to this but tailored. But tonight, it's specifically for the mixed-use district as a general category. With that, I'll open the floor to any public comment on the mixed-use district regulations. All right, there being none, I'll close it. Council, any questions, comments?
Yeah, let me find it. I have one comment. Just as discussed, on F, permitted uses, F3, permitted uses is multifamily residential for lease apartments and condominiums. Is that standalone apartments?
It is not standalone apartments. All of the mixed-use districts would be subject to a master plan, which would have to be approved by Planning, Planning Commission as well as council. And the intent, as stated in the new regulations in the comp plan, would be multifamily residential above commercial, so stacked on the second, third floors, fourth floors of buildings that otherwise would be commercial structures.
Okay.
So the answer is no. That's not standalone multifamily apartments.
All right. That's my only question. Anybody else have a question? No other council comments? Chris?
Any Commission comments? Any other comments? Then we will close the public hearing.
All right.
And we will adjourn off to the across the street.
Okay. We'll give you a minute to exit the room. All right. Item number two is a special presentation from Firehouse Subs, Public Safety Foundation grant for the T K fire department. Did y'all bring any subs? Well, if I do it right now, how long will it take?
Mayor and council, let me introduce, this is Cindy and Bob Terrano. They own the local firehouse subs on 160.
Catching on fire? I bet he can fix it right.
Okay. All right. Mayor and council, let me introduce to you Bob and Cindy Terrano. They own the local firehouse subs on 160 and also one on Dave Lyle and Rock Hill. They were instrumental in this. They put in a good word for us. We submitted the grant probably two months ago, and we got notification about two weeks ago that we awarded the grant for $11,547.20 for a jet ski and a tandem truck to pull it on. So we thank Firehouse Subs and their commitment to the community and to safety.
Very much. Hey, Chief, tell everybody what we're going to use the jet ski for. It's not just for recreational purposes.
No, it's not for recreational purposes only. We've had 26 water rescues below the dam this year, and the goal with this is to provide rescue craft so we can get out there and reach the victims quicker, and hopefully we do life safety.
But Chief, you guys got to do a lot of training, right?
We do. We do. We've done a tremendous amount of training on the front end. All of our people are swift water trained now, and we have to do about 16 hours of boat ops training with a ski for each person before we can actually go out and use it. So we do. We've got a lot of training ahead.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I don't want to see that gas bill be too high now.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, appreciate it. I eat at Firehouse Subs on Dave Lyle all the time. It's right down from my office.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item three, public comments. I have two people sign up. Let's start with Carl Schaefer. Carl, give me your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
All right. Hi, this is Carl Schaefer, 7769 Trail Raiders Drive. Also the acting president of the Lake Shore A R C now. I'm starting to get involved mainly because of this issue, so want to help get the word out. So I may be working with the city to try and get some word out to let people know that they need to be submitting to the A R C when you live in the A R C area of Lake Shore. So regardless of that, once again, just reinforcing my views that this change was mainly for corner lots, and the fencing on the corner lots has created several bad instances where we've got six-foot-tall fences, some of which are shadow box, some of which are not, but we have one location where there are three dueling on a corner lot, which nothing can be done at this point, which is, you know, that is what it is. The code was written and changed three years ago to a more restrictive code, which was a bit, I think, overkill in terms of the reasons why it came about for pool requirements. And I saw an email today and have read through it. All the documents actually in the email reinforce that our new code is actually just as strict as it should be for pool requirements, yet we maintain it in an aesthetic that would be more in line with keeping T K beautiful. So I'll implore the city council to consider these changes, that they're good, they will still provide safety for our children, but it will also keep T K beautiful.
Okay. So you know, this is a two-reading amendment, so we have to read this twice. If it, if we get approved this time, we still have to approve it next time, and if it doesn't go next time, then it's, it dies.
Okay.
So there's a two, this is the first of two readings. So just if this passes today, doesn't mean it's the end of it. You got that?
I understand that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate your involvement with all this. It's, we always tell the citizens, if you want to see something or do something, got to come see us.
Like I said, it really was, I just saw something that I didn't feel was in line with the way T K is and how beautiful it is and one of the reasons why I moved.
Okay. Great. Appreciate it.
Just to add, Mr. Schaefer has been at, oh, okay, I am on. Can you hear me? Just to add, not only has he been at all of our city council meetings, but he has also been to the Planning Commission meetings. So he has put in a significant amount of time, and so we know it's been time-consuming. It's taken a lot to follow, but we really do appreciate your help and recommendations.
That's involvement. That's the kind of involvement you need.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Second is, next is Natalie Burt. Please step up and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Natalie Burt, and my address is 1110, do I need to pull it down? Okay. My address is 111057 Cove's Drive. You still can't hear?
No, just speak up a little bit.
Okay.
If you're six feet away, you can remove your mask just to talk.
Oh, thank you. Natalie Burt, my address is 111057 Cove's Drive. And I wanted to ask for some clarification about the draft that is in the process on chickens. And in Article D7, it talks about that there's no sale of the eggs. I was wondering if you could clarify that, because I didn't know if that just really, you were trying to keep it from commercial sales. But I mean, I've already had friends say, hey, can I buy some eggs from you? Is that going to be restricted?
Commercial quantities, I think we're talking about.
It's a great question. We had the same one, actually.
We've been talking about it.
We'll go ahead and clarify, make sure it's clarified in the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If you're just selling a nagger here too, nobody's going to know about it, and we don't care, but we're talking about commercial. If you have a chicken ranch in your backyard, and you've got a truck pull up, and, you know, 60 dozen eggs go out every day, we'd have a problem with that.
Right.
And I think you would too, if you lived next door.
Right.
But if you're, how many, you got four chickens?
No. I have 14.
14 chickens? Okay. More power to you. Those things produce what, a week?
Well, I mean, we're going into the winter season, so, you know, they're not going to be producing as much, and some of them have not started laying yet, but, you know...
But I mean, you're not making a house payment with your selling eggs, right?
David, it ranges.
I wish.
Get it? It ranges.
I would think in the summertime, I mean, it's possible that we'll get a dozen a day. But, I mean, my family alone goes through...
I don't think that's commercial quantity.
Yeah. My family alone goes through three dozen a week.
And you're going to eat most of them yourself, probably, right?
And they're pretty good.
Yeah. I don't, I don't mean, I'm just kind of just taking a glance around here. I'm not, think we're talking about that kind of quantity.
Okay.
If you have an egg every once in a while, we don't, we don't care. We're talking about commercial quality, quantity.
I would think if, like, the mayor pro temp bought a couple dozen from you, it would kind of legitimize everything, so.
Over the...
You're now going to have to recuse yourself from this vote.
Be more happy to help y'all.
Okay.
Yeah, she's right. Now you got to recuse yourself from the vote.
I had one other question about the building permit. Is that going to be just for new construction or for existing construction?
New. You can speak up. I can't hear you either.
That'll be for new going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, your grandfathered in with most of the stuff.
Great. Thank you so much.
Just no roosters. All right. So anybody else that didn't get here in time to sign up want to make any public comments? Okay, let's move on to item number four, approval of minutes. Council, you've received the regular city council meetings of September 21st and September 29th. Are there any additions, deletions, changes?
Nope. It's number six.
That's the next one. You skipped, you skipped ahead. Here. Not on mine.
Not on mine.
In any event, before I was interrupted, are there any additions, deletions, or changes? Seeing none, hearing none, all the minutes stand as published. Now we go to item five, committee reports.
We met on the 28th of September. We did have a quorum. We had a lively discussion. We discussed the mixed-use zoning updates and got some updates from our Planning Commission subcommittee member who was going to all the meetings. Discussed food trucks, and we're going to discuss with Rock Hill what their program was as it relates to their food truck program. They have rallies in several areas around town. We all were trying to come up with a way to help out the Glennon Center. I mean, obviously with COVID, they've lost a whole year's worth of, oh, well, not a year's, but many months' worth of weddings and banquets and things, and, you know, now we're coming up on Christmas party season, and they're losing some of those as well. Just trying to come up with various ideas that would get some people in there to help them out. I talked to John, and some of our ideas were probably not going to help it so much. I mean, he said if he doesn't have 40 or 50 people in there eating and things, it's really not going to help. To bring in the staff, he needs at least that much. Got a retail strategies update. They're pulling data and looking at what fits and what doesn't. Study showed that one in four jobs are in retail, and that retail here pays very well as compared to other areas. They like that we do have some property available that hasn't been built on yet. Data mining showing that we're drawing people from the other side of 77, not just from our side of 77. And by early next year, we should have an advertising strategy for the existing businesses. Also talked about possibly inviting Billy Dunlap to come speak with us or visit us at one of our meetings, and discuss the Thomas Building, which is adjacent to the city property and is currently under contract, and the possibility of bringing it into the city when it changes hands. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Next, Planning Commission?
All right. Thank you very much. So Planning Commission met on October 5th. There was a joint training activity with Fort Mill on the Carolina Thread Trail and Ann Springs Close Greenway that some of our commissioners were able to attend, so thank you guys for putting in the extra effort there, in addition to your liaison groups that they're going and meeting and going to those commission meetings as well. Just to remind you, Fort Mill Planning, York County, Board of Zoning Appeals, Fort Mill School District, and TK Economic Development Committee. For the meeting agenda, the commission approved a revised Phase 1 Final Plan for Windhaven. It adjusts the street alignments and moves nine single-family detached units from future phases into Phase 1. So no increase to the total housing units, no increase to the total housing units. They also recommended a revision to the fencing ordinance that we will see tonight, and also the mixed-use district items. In terms of work plan going forward, they did discuss, just real briefly, their work plan for 2021, and just their desire to get input from city council. So if there are items or things on your mind that we would like to go ahead and assign or ask the Planning Commission to look at, please let us know within the next month or two, so we can get those added to their work plan and prioritize appropriately. And then one thing that I wanted to add that they had talked about, potentially looking at, was noise and/or nuisance, noise and/or nuisance ordinance that could serve as guidance for potential zoning ordinance changes or variance requests. And as an example, it could be, let's see, we could, they could allow privacy fences in very limited circumstances where noise abatement could be cited as a reason for the variance. So it gives them some flexibility if, for some reason, noise became an issue for a neighbor like that might live against a busy road or something like that, it would give them the flexibility to make some adjustments to allow them to, like, put in a privacy fence to adjust for that. Going forward, they checked off several things on their 2020 work plan, so thanks again to the Planning Commission. You guys always do a great job, always get a lot accomplished, and I'm so grateful for all of your work and dedication. And then anything that didn't get finished this year, they'll reprioritize with next year's items. But huge thanks going to the Planning Commission. As you can see on our agenda tonight, there's a lot of work that's being done, and it's a lot of really meaningful stuff, so.
Do you have a list of your current work plan or what you're rolling over to 2021? Okay.
We can send that out.
Yeah. That'd be great. If you, somebody could send that to me, just so I could see what you do have planned, so if there are any additions.
We could send that out to all council. Probably find it.
All done?
All done.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item six, which is unfinished business. This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend zoning code, Article 10, Section 19-165, permissible uses and specific exclusion. This is our animal regulations. City council directed the Planning Commission in March 2020 to work on an amendment to ordinance 77, which is the zoning code. The Planning Commission developed and proposed a zoning text amendment to regulate the keeping of poultry, domestic fowl, and honeybees, and prohibiting the raising and sheltering of livestock within the municipal boundaries. City council approved the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance with this amendment at our last regular meeting, and is considering the second and final read of the amendment at this time. Are there any questions? Ryan, you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're about to vote. Thank you.
When we read the motion, Mayor, can we add that we're going to add in the commercial verbiage to it, just so that we can have it on record? Is that okay?
Yes.
Bob's shaking his head.
Point of clarification, so are we talking, just to go back, it's...
We're on 6A.
Yeah. Section D, item seven, it does say it shall be unlawful to raise poultry for commercial purposes within the corporate limits of the city, or to sell eggs laid by poultry kept in the corporate limits of the city. So does that commercial then...
We need to define what commercial is, I guess. Is that what you're...
Yeah, I just don't want to come back to this, like, what, yeah, what is, at what point?
The way that it's written covers the concern that was brought up tonight.
Sure. I agree.
If you want to get more specific in what commercial means, unless y'all can figure that out in your discussion tonight, I would, I would table this, and we can come back with something.
I think everybody understands what commercial quantities are versus just neighborhood quantities, I guess I should say. Is everyone, do you have, are y'all comfortable with that?
I'm fine with that. As long as it's in there. I just wanted to make sure that it was in there.
The way it's written, it leaves it up to the discretion of the code enforcement officer that would be...
I guess we could cross that bridge when we come to it, if it all of a sudden gets to be 10 dozen eggs a day or something, and, you know, there's a cash register ringing outside and all that kind of stuff, but...
Correct.
I think just neighborhood quantities, I think we all just...
I think you're good. We're good.
Was Susan making a comment? I couldn't understand.
Commercial implies retail, which I think we all realize.
All right. Let's entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code, Article X, Section 19-165, permissible uses and specific exclusions, animal regulations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And that's unanimous. Thank you, Ryan. Let's move on to new business 7A, Planning Commission recommendations. Chris, you want to step back?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Regarding the public hearing item from tonight, which would be to amend the zoning code, Article 10, Section 19-153, Sub 3, mixed-use districts, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval or recommend to council that they approve those ordinance changes. And as already been discussed, in our last planning meeting, we also voted unanimously to recommend approval for the fencing regulations, as they have been proposed for tonight as well. That's also in our first read.
Thank you. Was there any questions for Chris before he stepped away? You're good. I'm just kidding. Go ahead. I just like, all right, let's go down then to 7B, which is introduction, the first reading of an ordinance to amend zoning code, Article 10, Section 19-153, parentheses 3, for mixed-use district. Members of the Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, and city council have been reading, meeting over the last year to develop a text amendment to the zoning code relating to the mixed-use district. Many of the changes came from recent PDD site standards and have been approved by city council. Overall, these changes will help with the developing mixed-use residential, commercial, and employment centers identified by the community as desirable during the recent comprehensive plan update. Any questions?
I just have a quick comment.
Quick.
Okay. Want to thank the Planning Commission for all of their work, Mr. Schaefer, for coming to all of the meetings. I think I'm good with 99% of it. I'm good with the setbacks. I'm glad that the swimming pool fence enclosures must conform to the building of city codes.
We're on mixed-use, we're on the mixed-use amendment, not the fence amendment.
Say that.
But ditto the work from the Planning Commission and, and ED, and right, council?
So redeem yourself by making a motion.
I'll leave the office.
Okay. You can't make two in a row, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code, Article 10, Section 19-153, 3, mixed-use district.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alicia Dash. Any questions before you vote? All in favors?
No.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. 7C, get ready, Heather. Introduction, first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code, Article 13, Section 19-401, fences in residential and park districts. After hearing concerns from residents regarding shadow box style fences being constructed on corner lots, city council directed the Planning Commission to review the current fence regulations within the zoning code and bring back any recommended changes. After a series of meetings and discussions on the matter, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 21st with the city council to receive input from the community. Tonight, we are considering those changes. Any questions or comments?
All right, I'm going to finish up, if that's okay. All right. Sorry, y'all. Get it together. Okay. So I like the corner lot height changes. I got all my questions on spacing of the pickets answered tonight. One question I still have, and it was tried to be explained to me, but I want to make sure I understand, is how do you measure opacity? Do you know the answer to that, Susan?
I like that word, opacity?
Opacity.
Opacity? Opacity.
He did. He did.
Yes. Okay. You know, first, the definition of opacity is how you can see through a direct line. And if you take the formula based on what the, the average picket sizes are, and then you do the spacing between that and the clear spacing between the pickets, multiply that, and that gives you a percentage. So that's where you get that the maximum of 60% opacity means it'll obscure no more than 60% of the view into the property.
Okay. Okay.
And Susan, while you're there, since we've talked about it, but maybe they haven't heard, we're updating our code to the latest and greatest of, of what? What's it called? Standards for building and what is it called?
That's correct. What we, our Planning Commission did a lot of research on this, and looking at the sizes of pickets, what's the standard sizes, what's normally adjusted or recommended for fencing, and so that's where they came up with, with the picket sizes. And the opacity requirement will virtually eliminate the shadow box, because the shadow box opacity is at an angle, not, not direct.
And this conforms with all the newest and, what is it, the code? Sorry?
Yes, sir. It does conform with the code requirements, the International Code Council's requirement for swimming pools and spas. That states that it can't be less than 1 and 3/4 inches or more than 4 inches, or the ability to pass a 4-inch spear between the, and for that is to really keep kids from hitting the crossbars and climbing over the fence.
And this satisfies the insurance companies that we're doing, everything's right for the...
Yes, sir. It's the code verbatim.
From the Insurance Commission or whatever it's called?
It's from the International Codes Council for swimming pools and spas.
All right. Good enough for me. Are there any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code, Article 13, Section 19-401, fences in residential and park districts.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. And I just want to reiterate, this is a first reading. The second reading will be done one month from now, so we have a lot of time to, if there's even more discussion that needs to be brought in, if anybody still has any concerns, it's got to pass two readings, okay? Okay, it's time, no other questions? Let's vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you. Let's go to 7D, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals member removal. Mr. and Ms. Leotis was appointed to the Zone, Board of Zoning Appeals by city council and unfortunately has not been able to fill that seat. Staff has sent multiple communications to Ms. Leotis and they have not, and they have gone unanswered. Since city council appointed her to the board, council will need to vote to remove her from the board so that we can begin advertising the position and bring a suitable candidate back to us for consideration. Everybody understand that? All right, make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to remove Nicole Leotis from the Board of Zoning Appeals and authorize city staff to advertise the vacancy for her unfilled term ending March 31st, 2022.
Have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. Well, second by Gus Machinas. No more questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Let's go to item 7E, which is Kataba Park, proposed scheduling consideration of funding sources. I guess that means we've got a guest speaker here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I'm going to let Joey start through part of it and then I'll jump in when we start talking about some of the funding.
Okay, Joey, it's all yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me tonight to discuss a tremendous topic, one we've been talking about for quite some time now.
Let's say seven, eight years, right?
Ah, well before that.
Nine years, nine years.
I'll tell my quick story. I was hired by Charlie to run Kataba Park and the vision was in three to five years I would be running Kataba Park.
We've been talking about it since before I was on council.
Sucker. 13th year this August. It's been a while.
Really?
I found some other things to do during that time. So what you see before you is the proposed Phase 1 of Kataba Park. You'll see four, or three 225 baseball slash softball fields, one 300-foot baseball softball field, and then you'll see another field that's kind of tucked away in the corner there that we envisioned for T-ball. Because, simply because the, the field dimensions won't let us do any other size and part of our focus with this park as well is to make sure to utilize the facilities for children of all ages and make sure to get, there's three, four, and five-year-olds involved here as well because they are the future of the program. So that, that encompasses a large chunk of the city-owned property. If you head towards the left, you'll see the big green space area there. That, that's the open play meadow that we ultimately envisioned having an amphitheater there. During Phase 1 of it, we will irrigate it, grass that area, which will allow us to host our community events there, Fall Festival, the concerts. We're, we're hopeful that this will allow us to turn Fall, Fall Festival into potentially a multi-day event opposed to just a single day. It's also a challenge utilizing the Glennon Center as is right now because golf is still going on with that and parking is limited there. So we, we anticipate on being able to have that open field or that open play space and still being able to rent stages, just like we're doing for our current events as well. If you continue to the left, you'll see a little brown building there. That is going to be our maintenance facility where we're going to keep all of our equipment, store dirt. It'll be a fenced-in area to be able to give our guys kind of all the storage and stuff they need that we'll take for the park. If you continue down, you'll see a loop, kind of following down into the parking lot and exiting out. That's actually a pretty big part of the park, being able to get that main loop in with, with the first phase because that will kind of help with entering and exiting the facility. And into that parking spot or parking lot space, I, I believe it's roughly 200 some odd spots. That's going to be a part of that first phase, which will be greatly, greatly needed. If you go to Rundy, Turner, it pales in comparison parking lots than what we anticipate on having down there. What isn't pictured on this Phase 1 is what we're currently working on with Duke Energy to add additional parking over at the River Launch area, which has been wildly popular area as well. After some communication with Duke Energy today, there is an opportunity that we may be able to pave that as part of just their, their phased approach opposed to us waiting on, on paving it when we have the funds. They may go ahead and just pave that for us, which would be great.
And where would that be depicted on this? Right next to where it looks like the parking places are there now?
It's, it's off the map. If you see the little road heading down, it, it's kind of over in that area, but it's cut off based off of that map, but.
Mayor, if, hold on a second. Mayor, if you look at the, the image in your packet, you see the black and white parking lot to the lower left corner?
Yep.
It's right above that. Hunter New Space is right above that.
So I see so, a bunch of broken dotted lines, I guess that's where the power lines are going across?
Yeah, the power lines go through there. It'll be between the power lines and that existing parking lot.
Okay, so it'll actually be closer to where the parking places are now?
Correct, yeah, it'll be right up against them.
As you're driving in?
Right up against them, yes, sir.
The nice thing about this is if Duke Energy does follow through and actually pave the site, we're currently looking to potentially some type of surplus depending on what ultimately the bids come in. If we're not having to pave that area, that may allow us to put a big chunk into the future playground site that you see pictured there that's currently not allocated any funds for, but we're hopeful to be able to do something at that site to give the little kids that, you know, that has siblings playing, give them something to do as well. So that's kind of as a big picture view, that's what we're anticipating on Phase 1.
So we have talked before about where the Fall Festival might move over there and maybe be a one or a two-day event. Are you going to put it in the parking lot like we do here? Or are you going to put it in that open field?
I think we had anticipated on having in the open play meadow, have, be able to have tents set out, kind of like they do, what they do with the Strawberry Festival. We create a path, you set up your tent, you're, you're there for the weekend and be able to utilize the parking spots.
Great, I like that. Because we need parking places out here. There's like, we can't park at Rundy or other places here, when this is it. Yeah, that's a good, I like that idea.
One, one quick question, just to clarify. I drove down there several times just to see how crowded it was. The area you're talking about that Duke is doing, about halfway down the main drive into the place, it's cleared on both sides of the road going towards the power lines?
Correct.
It, it is, but this parking lot's below that. The area where it's going is not cleared yet.
If, if you drive all the way down into the parking lot, do you know where the, the big garbage unit is? It's basically right behind there. And as part of that, we are anticipating on restriping that parking lot as well. There's a way, based off of capacity of boats, I don't think there's as exit, a need for as many boat park, trailer parking spots as what's allocated. And what's become an issue is that people are utilizing it and parking three-deep in these parking spots. So leaving about nine to 10, that should be able to accommodate our boaters' usage. And that gives us opportunity to open up, I believe, as 10 to 15 additional spots as well, just by reconfiguring that parking lot.
We also talked in the past about golf cart parking at this point. Where's, is that depicted anywhere on this?
Not, not specific, no, sir, but yes, there, there will be allocations for golf cart.
Would that be in the, in the future brownish area up there, the?
No, sir. It'll, it'll be part of the, part of your existing parking, through there.
Down, down below part or in closer?
In closer to the ball fields.
Right, I see that. I see the islands there, the little green, I don't know if you can see them.
Yeah, that's, that's just landscape islands.
Those are what?
That's just landscape islands.
Okay. But so probably on that, on that front row?
Coming off of the main, the main driveway loop, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Joey?
Round through the schedule, Joey.
So here's kind of the proposed timeline of, of everything, if everything goes as scheduled, hopefully. Where we've been working with Campco, Al Walters has done a great job kind of putting everything together. We're hopeful to get those, close to those final construction documents sometime this month, within the next month or two. And then from there, a big part of it's going to be permitting because we do have to get FERC involved with Duke Energy being involved with the process. So that would take place in December. With council's blessing, hopefully we can put it out to bid in March, be able to get some good bids in, everyone feels comfortable with the bids, and hopefully we'll be breaking ground sometime in June and I will be a very excited man.
Then you'll finally have something to do.
Yeah, finally.
After all this time. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So council, to kind of bring this conversation around, appreciate Joey walking everyone through Phase 1. Long time coming, obviously. So one of the, I guess, marching orders, if you will, that I heard from the, from council from the budget workshop is find a way to start Kataba Park. We've got to start Kataba Park. So what you've got before you and in your packet tonight, and as I've, as I've mentioned to several of you, I'd prefer we not mention dollar amounts at this point. Let's see what the bids come in at before we start talking about how much we want to borrow or can borrow. Sometimes when bidders hear how much you're looking to borrow, the pricing comes in magically at that amount. But the funding sources and, and kind of the direction is, is really what I'm looking for, direction from, am I headed the right direction with this? Do you have concerns? Obviously, this isn't the last time you are going to get a chance to, to look at this type stuff, okay? So once we, once we get the construction plans done, the engineers get those done and we get it out for bid, then we're going to know exactly how much, yeah, Phase 1's going to cost us. Then you're going to have the opportunity to consider the funding mechanism and actually vote.
So we're really talking about March?
Probably April, May timeframe, yes, sir, to be quite honest. But, you know, I've got work to do between now and then, especially if any of these funding sources, which I've got, you've got shown in your packet, you've got them up here on the board. TKK Forever, yeah, obviously, this is one of the biggest things that was, this was the main purpose it was created for. So there, there's, there's a sum of money there. Our Parks and Rec impact fees, as those were being developed, it was envisioned for Kataba Park. H-tax, now that's, that's, that's a new one there, but we're not wiping out all the H-tax money. You know, it's, it's using portions of, and in 2026, you see that we're adding another 24,000 plus to that because the, the Rundy Parklights are then retired. So that's where that money comes from. But you're talking about a small portion out of what your total H-tax budget is.
Sorry, to clarify on that, on an annual basis, though?
Correct, on an annual basis.
The initial amount, we're wiping it and then going forward, it's just a portion.
Correct, that is correct. Yeah, the fee and lieu that's coming from Lennar for, for, from Windhaven, you know, use, using those funds to go towards this. And then as we retire down existing bond debt, using 50% of present-day dollars, you know, so what we're paying in 2020, 2021 for those bonds as they get retired, using 50% of that, so not all of it, but part of it, to go towards what would be considered, at least the way I've got it put together now, as an installment purchase revenue bond. So it wouldn't hit your 8% borrowing capacity. Yeah, and you'd be able to move forward. That's, that's kind of where we're at right now. So our engineers are marching forward, plugging along, should be here in the next three weeks, three to four weeks, we should have the 95% complaint, uh, plan completion. So we start looking at those. Is there anything that we left out? Is there anything we need to add in? Ms. Dash and I were speaking before the meeting, potentially charging stations for electric cars, like an electric vehicle charging station, not a golf cart charging station, but electric vehicle. Yeah, so as we get the 95% complaints, plans complete, obviously, we'll, we'll, we'll review those with you. Is there anything that you're wanting, making sure that we've covered, you know, that Phase 1? You know, is, is there anything else that you'd like to see as part of Phase 1? No, okay, they finished those. We advertise for bids, all right? Campco would review all the bids, they would come in, make a presentation to council, this is the company they recommend and why, and that, that, you know, have that dialogue with you. Council's good with that? Okay, now it's time to put together the, the, the funding. We don't have to put together the, you don't have to do the borrowing at the time you issue the contract because obviously you've got a good bit of cash on hand already and you can do the borrowing within 60 days.
What I would like to look, see is, the way we pay for it, I'd like to have more than one choice. So a couple of courses of action, give me the pluses and minuses of the different ways that you can think of, we pay for this and we'll figure out that way. Instead of just having one thing like this, I think was the concern earlier.
Okay.
Give me a, give me more than one choice or maybe a couple of choices, then be able to, to tell us what's the pluses and the minus of it so we can actually, as silly as some of that even may sound, you know, course of action number three, we'll all say, well, that, that's ridiculous, but just give us, so we, so we can compare.
I could get with our financial advisors from First Tryon, probably have them in here next, next month to, if not next month, definitely at your December meeting to lay out those, those types of scenarios and options for you.
And I'm sure you'll be hearing from everybody about what to add in or take away from the, the park itself. I mean, that's how it's grown from 12 million to 15 million over the last dozen years or so. Everybody wants bigger and better. Any other questions, comments? Ryan, any comments from you?
No, nothing specific. I mean, my thought would be what generates revenue, let's do that first.
Okay. Got it. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, let's move on to item 8, the city manager's report. Charlie?
Yes, sir. I'll try to be brief. Mayor and council, our fall sports programs are wrapping up over the next couple of weeks and I'm, I'm really pleased to report that, very, very successful. Yeah, as I, I said this last month, I want to say it again, especially because he's here, big hats off and a sincere gratitude to Joey Bletton and our programmers, Dustin Overton, Walker Johnson, Andrew Rad for the work that they did. Yeah, I'm coaching in my daughter's softball team and, you know, we finish our end-of-season tournament next week. It's crazy, it's fast, but they got it in, they did a great schedule, thanks to all the parents and participants for following the guidelines, really, really good stuff. As Joey minute, mentioned moments ago, we were talking about the parking lot. We're having a pre-construction conference with Duke Energy and their contractor on Friday is a, and then the following week they should be started grading down there. So access area will be closed during the weekdays, yeah, for the, at least for the rest of this month, and then it'll be closed seven days a week until they finish, starting about the first, second week in November. And that is per Duke Energy and their contractor's request, so. Do want to give you an update on the SC Cares Act. After we went back with them and, and had some further conversations, if y'all recall, last month I told you we were going to receive right around $100,000. It's actually coming in at just north of $163,000 and that check should be here any day now. So thank you Governor McMaster and the folks with the SC Cares Act for making that available to help reimburse for a lot of funds that we spent over the last seven, eight months related to COVID. Last but certainly not least, we finished our fiscal year much better than we thought we were going to financially. Should be able to get those reports out to you sometime next week. Bob and Dana are working on paying the final bills for September that come in a little bit late. Once I get those from them this week, we'll be able to submit our 2021 budget book to GFOA, so that should be into this week, first of next week that that goes out. I wanted to make sure we had those final September numbers in there. And then all budgets, as I said, really performed well, the exception of Beach and Swim Center. And that's the Beach and Swim Center fund. That's one we're going to have to keep a, a real close eye on this, this coming year, especially in that May-June timeframe when the bulk of that revenue comes in. If, if, if we have another year like we did this year, we may have to start having conversations about operating that a little bit differently than the way we've operated it from the get-go. So, you know, hoping we're going to be able to chalk this up as just a COVID year and that's why it was the way that it was, but we'll see what happens coming around next year. So that'll definitely be a fund that we're watching. H-tax, as I've reported previously to council, really bounced back very, very well, all things considered, to only have missed that budgetary mark by about $2,000 is impressive. Hats off to the community for really supporting the local, the local restaurants there. It's just fantastic because I didn't, in March, April, I didn't think that was going to be the case, so great job there. And that's, that's my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Go to council comments. Ryan, you want to go first?
Yeah, I got nothing, guys.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Alicia?
Okay, just a couple of quick things. I just want to reiterate my thanks to Bob and Cindy with Firehouse Subs. Awesome that the fire department's getting a jet ski. I can't wait to see that. That'll be really cool, but more importantly, more emergency response equipment is important. Thanks to those, again, in Parks and Rec. I know it's been a, a fun season for us playing soccer, so thank you, Joey, and looking forward to more information coming soon on Kataba Park. Election coming up, get out and vote, guys.
Already voted.
Good for you. Good job. If you haven't already, get out and vote. Huge thanks to, to Charlie and Tim and, and the rest of staff for their work on Stonecrest Boulevard, replacing the landscaping along that road and working on the coming work on Hebert Graham Roundabout. I know that that's been something that this council had put on our work, our work plan is something we would like to, to see done. And so I hope that everyone gets to see that and enjoy the, the benefits of that. And then one other thing I wanted to just mention to council is that since we are in October, we've got two more meetings left for the year. So was just going to bring up the topic of looking, thinking about 2021 and what we want to put on our work plan. I know planning commission's thinking about theirs. We, we might have some carryover items, although, although small, but we really did have gotten a lot accomplished so far and I'm looking forward to next year. And this, we can wait till everyone's done with comments, but I was just going to see if Charlie had an update on the crosswalks, but I'll let the rest of the council go.[1779.81]
All right. Yeah, anything that we can do to get out of 2020 is fine with me. Heather, you have anything to say?
Yeah, I can give you an update on crosswalks. So SC DOT gave us a presumptive timeline of March-April to have Heron Harbor installed, and that will be the in-Mount Road flashers things, which will be pedestrian activated. The total cost was about $168,000.
It's outrageous.
We were responsible for 20% of that, which we have already paid, as was required by SC DOT before we were even able to put out for bid, before they were able to put it out for bid. Obviously, we would have liked this process to go a lot smoother and would have liked crosswalks to be installed during the school year instead of at the end or maybe even when it's over, but it is what it is, unfortunately. So that's the update. Did I miss anything there?
I think you very well captured it.
Okay.
Gus? You finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
That's it?
Yeah.
99% of the fence. So, boy, when you go almost last, there's not much left when you get to you. Thank you to the planning commission for all the hard work on the last couple of ordinances we were looking at. I'm extremely excited that Kataba Park is actually, well, it's been job security for Joey for 13 years now, but, so Joey, you might want to tighten up just a little bit, especially if we start building it. And I will echo what Alicia said, we've got an election in two weeks. Everybody get out and vote if you haven't voted already. I'm a traditional guy, I'm gonna go stand in line about 6:30 after work, and as long as I'm there before 7:00, they gotta let me vote, so I'm gonna vote. While we're talking about the election, be nice, people. This is all part of what American democracy is. We all get to make our choices and we don't have to hate people if they choose differently than we do. So a little bit of niceness and respect would be appreciated. That's all.
Again, I want to thank planning commission, you guys do a bang-up job, doing a great job. Everything you come to us is top-notch, always appreciate everything you do, and you're always available to talk to and phone calls and emails and all that, so I appreciate it. Just one more thing about voting. If you want to go vote early, it's the same as voting on November 3rd, your vote counts immediately. You can go to Bank Street Auditorium, and it's open from 9:00 to 4:00, except for on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's open from 9:00 to 7:00. But in case I'm wrong, just double-check with, on the voter something.com, scvotes.com or something.
You can also get to it through the county's website.
There you go. And then, of course, it's open on Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00. If you're in line, by the time it gets to 1:00, they put a little cone behind you, nobody else can come in after that. So if you're in line, you get to vote. So pretty much everybody from TKK is working the poll there. I think four people that were working there were TKK people, so I recognized every one of them. I was like, my point was gonna be what? Getting old, your mind, the mind is a terrible thing to waste. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. But I went, like I said, I went and voted last week, and it took me 32 minutes from the time I got into the line till the time I got all the way out of the building. So 32 minutes versus, I think, what you want to do on 6:30 on the November 3rd, you'd probably be here a couple hours, that's be my guess. So far, I think a little over 10,000 people as of, as of, today's Monday, as of Saturday, had voted in York County. And there's 280,000 people in York County, half of those are probably voter age, half of those are probably registered to vote. I don't know the, do you know the number, how many people are registered to vote? Oh, she's gonna find out. So a pretty good chunk, I would imagine, probably 10%, 15% of the people have already voted.
If everybody goes out and votes early, as you're urging them to, then my wait time will be less, so please, go vote early.
197,613 people in York County.
Okay, and how many of those are registered to vote?
Those are the registered voters in York County.
Very good, so I bet half of those, we'll probably have half the turnout, it's pretty good, 50%, so we're probably right at 15% of voting so far. So help Gus get through the line faster, go out and vote early. That's all I have. I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.